Test, test, test. We're all testing.
The meeting will start by an invocation by me, after which the pledge of allegiance will be given by someone that we call on, I believe. There he is. We'll wait for Steve.
Why don't we just write?
You have to give the pledge of allegiance right after the prayer.
Heavenly Father, as we come before thee this day, we're grateful and grateful for the marvelous blessings that we've won. I recognize that there's much challenge in life and many things that we can't control and grateful for strength and dealing with those things that we can. Grateful for our freedoms. I'm grateful for our family and the friendships that we enjoy and pray that they're all able to listen. Be those things that are pleasing on that side. We pray for our inspiration and direction for this day of this meeting. And what we do will be important.
I would make a motion. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and has justice for all.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate that. Okay, we have minutes. Everybody have an opportunity to review the minutes.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second, a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to approve the minutes from March 26, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have administrative review, reports, future agenda items. Anything, Commissioner? Any former agenda items?
I just was checking. Where are we at with the Willard issue with the canyon, the trails? Will we be able to put that on the agenda in the future in the future? Okay, so we're working on a trail agenda for Willard Canyon. I think here, hopefully for April 23rd, if not the first meeting in May. Okay, and still we're working on that.
Okay, thank you. Emergency management issues. ARPA LATCF. Josh, do you have anything that you know about that? Okay, all right. That puts us at Agenda Item 7, Attorney's Office. Steve. We're appointing the compensation adjustment for the administrative law judge, Richard Catten.
He is the administrative law judge for our employee pill process. We have a bill coming forward that we're going to need before, so we've ratified the agreement. And so we just need you to sign your advice. So we're just going to just need you to ratify that agreement.
I'd make a motion that we ratify the agreement 25-22 for the compensation adjustment for the administrative law judge, Richard Catten.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to ratify the compensation adjustment for the administrative law judge, Richard Catten, for agreement 25-22. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item A, a letter of support for Comcast application to Utah's broadband infrastructure grant. It's a motion by Commissioner Perry. You familiar with this?
Yeah, we, there's a broadband agreement that's out there right now. It doesn't affect the county really to speak of. It's something that's been run through the federal government and through the state broadband equity access program. There are, according to what the companies that came to the table had said, there's roughly 1,124 locations in Boxer County that are possibly eligible for the ability to hook up to broadband for those who are in a position where they would not be able to do it otherwise. And we've had two companies, Comcast, ask that all they have to have from us is saying that it's okay for them to operate within Boxer County. They would be, we would be giving them permission to operate within unincorporated Boxer County. They would have to work with each individual cities in there. If you look, the task we gave you shows you kind of a map. There's some places north of Brigham City that would be possibly amenable to it that are in our, between here and Honeyville. There are some places out further west. And there seem to be some places still in the Manta Way area that I was not aware of. They'll have to work with Manta Way possibly, if that's the case. But it does not cost county tax dollars, any money whatsoever. It would be strictly the company putting forward the cost and then asking for reimbursement through this process, through this federal program. And all we have to do is the county is to say that we're okay with them doing that. So I would make a motion that we approve, or we give a letter of support for the application for Comcast, as well as for Strata Networks, the two that asked us for that permission.
I would second that. And this is just, they're going to be working on our right of way, correct?
What's that?
That we're working on our right of way, correct?
Not necessarily. They don't even necessarily have to work in our right of way. They'll work with current companies that already have certain broadband in possibly. They may be installing more broadband themselves as a company as part of the costs that they have to absorb. And then they would have to work with the state and with the federal government if there's any possibility of reimbursement along with the private customer. It would have nothing really to do with us as a county other than to say that we're aware that they're working in our county.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve a letter of support for Comcast application to Utah's broadband infrastructure grant, as well as support for Strata Networks BEAD program application. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item C?
There was no, we just had that on there in case others came forward between now and the commission meeting, and there were no other requests that were made. Just those two.
Okay, thank you. Item 9A on our agenda, discuss the RFQ and award Fair Book production. Marla?
So we sent out requests for qualifications for the Fair Book, and we just received one back, and that's from Box Elder News Journal. They're the one who has done our Fair Book for the last few years. And so I just asked that you award the Fair Book to Box Elder News Journal.
I'd make a motion that we award the Fair Book production to Box Elder News Journal. I second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to award the Fair Book production to Box Elder News Journal. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 10, community development. Scott?
All right. Our first item is appointing three planning commissioners. So we've had four planning commissioners whose terms have expired. Three of those are being proposed for reappointment. Term is for three years. Those three names are Melanie Wildley, Jed Pugsley, and Jared Andre. No other questions?
I'd make a motion that we accept those nominations from the planning commission, the three-year terms.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to appoint planning commission members, Jed Pugsley, Melanie Wildley, and Jared. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Hey, item B?
Item B, this is ordinance number 620. So this would amend the text in chapter 3-6. Currently, that chapter is mobile home parts in our land use management and development code. This proposal, this change originated with an application from a resident probably nine months ago. And he submitted new language, and his new language probably eliminated 60 or 70% of what was in that code or modified it in some way. It went to the planning commission as part of a work session. At least one time, I think two times, it went to them as part of a work session for review of what he was proposing versus a variety of other discussion items. Anyway, once, once the planning commission really dug into it, they felt like what he was proposing, in addition to what was already there, was very outdated and didn't align with the county's current general plan. So what ended up happening is we just scrapped, as you can see in the proposal language, we just scrapped the whole chapter and started fresh with about half of what he was proposing, and that is RV facilities more specific for agritourism purposes. And the main reason for that is it would still allow for some RV facilities, but it would be a much lower density. The planning commission's feeling, based on the general plan, was that if you want to have the RV park, the style park that has RVs spaced out about every 10 feet, that those should be located within a city that has infrastructure that can support those. So primary water connection, sewer connection, that sort of thing. Now, as far as the RV facilities for agritourism, those would be allowed at a density of one or two acres, up to five spots maximum. The one point the planning commission did feel strongly about, that as you can see in the report that I submitted to you, that the applicant was, his portion, he was most unhappy with, as far as their proposal was not allowing for septic or water connection onsite. The planning commissions thought, their line of thinking was, with some of themselves having RVs and having used RVs, is that you can stay in an RV for five up to seven days, depending on how many occupants and that sort of thing, with the existing freshwater tank, gray tank, and black tanks, without needing those additional connections. And most agritourism experiences, also some of them being involved in agriculture, they couldn't really think of scenarios or, there would be very limited scenarios that would go beyond a five or seven day stay. Anyway, the applicant himself, he would love for the opportunity to have a connection to a septic tank and a connection to a water source. The planning commission's hesitation there was strictly that that space could very easily turn into a permanent residence in the trailer permanently on the property. So other than that, we tried to craft an ordinance that was fairly streamlined. We have an accessory building unit ordinance that we kind of used as a template in the way of streamlined agreements that you just clearly state what is required, and then when someone comes in, if they can propose, then it's easy for them to get that permit and proceed with it. And it avoids a lot of the back and forth that goes often with permitting and can drag the process out for months, so.
Any, any questions?
No. Very good, Scott. I appreciate all of you guys' hard work. I would approve the ordinance number 620, RV facilities for agritourism.
I'll second that. I have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to approve ordinance number 620, facilities for agritourism. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Item number C?
Okay, these next two items are fairly similar. They're both properties in the county currently, but just on the outskirts of Garland City. In fact, both of the properties are connected to Garland City's water and do both have some development, either mostly completed, or I would say maybe halfway completed on them. So very similar agreements came before you in 2024 and were approved. Those agreements have expired. They were, the timeframe on them basically said if the annexation proposed by these two property owners failed, then the agreement would expire. That annexation failed. And it failed for, not for the reason that Garland didn't want them, but it failed for the reason that Garland handled the annexation process improperly. So it ultimately went to an annexation board, and the annexation board said, just can't proceed, or it can't be approved because it was handled improperly. So what's happening now is Garland City is updating their annexation code to be consistent with state code and also to address island annexations where their previous code did not, I'm not 100% sure if it did not allow for island annexations or if it just did not address island annexations. They want to be able to have that as an option. So previously, in addition to it failing due to procedural issues, they, Garland did try to bring in some adjacent property owners that were not interested in annexing. I don't believe that is the intent this time with the update to their annexation code. It would allow them to annex these as islands. So ultimately, what this updated agreement does is it takes the old agreement, it renews it, so that these property owners, their two businesses can proceed. They both have structures that they want to complete and where they're in limbo. Because of our annexation policy that says if you're within half of the city, then you have to request annexation, they can't proceed with us. But where Garland City is ending their annexation code, they currently can't proceed with Garland either. And so what this would do is give jurisdictional authority to Garland City to work with them to proceed with the construction of those structures until they can proceed with annexation under Garland's new ordinance.
So like you mentioned, there would be an island that would be affecting those people who were involved in that border discussion?
I can't say 100% for certain, as I'm not Garland City, but that is my understanding with their updates. And I did email their city planner today to, because I did receive a call from one of those property owners.
As did I, and that's why I was going to ask you about is that question. The property owner is concerned that this is a workaround with Garland City, possibly to give more financial impact to these two pieces of property, which would give them the ability to dictate what happens to his property in an annexation situation. And I don't know if that's necessarily the case, but he is concerned because he can't be here to, obviously speaking his behalf. He's out of state right now. And so he called concerning the fact that he thinks that maybe we pass these two things, they now get their businesses built, and it puts more economic viability into their businesses and their property, and therefore it makes their property worth more than his own property, and therefore they have controlling interest. Is that a possibility at all?
As far as, Steve, I know I needed a lot of the research on the annexation code. My understanding is if, if it's not a voluntary annexation, that the only way a city can annex, the city can initiate the annexation of property outside of city limits, is if it's to correct irregular, irregular city boundaries. I'm not aware of a situation beyond that that would allow them to initiate an annex and involuntary annexation.
So how important is it we act on that today if we're not really sure? How important is it for us to act on it today?
So really what this comes down to is it's, it's the business owners that are very interested in this proceeding so that they can proceed with the construction of their, you know, one is a scale house and the other one is continued construction of their property building. And then Garland, obviously, they are interested in annexing them. The business owners are interested in being annexed as they're connected to city utilities and it costs them more being outside the city than it does being inside the city. So, but I guess, I don't, I don't really have a solid answer for you on that.
I guess the question, can we do what on our April 23rd meeting? And that way we get the answers we need to know before we do something that we can't undo. I guess is my concern is I'm just a little concerned about doing something, I don't want to stall these two businesses, but on the other hand, I have a property owner who's out of state right now, calling concerned about what he's seen on here. I don't know that he fully understands it either, and I'm just trying to make sure that we're doing the best to represent the needs of both sides here. And that's why I'm concerned about saying, yeah, I don't know if I want to pass this through this meeting. Would April 23rd be soon enough for them? Are they going to be okay with that if we?
I haven't heard a timeline from them. Generally with these things, it's usually, so in my experience with development, it's usually timelines are associated with financing. And neither of them have expressed that as far as we have to have this done by its time due to our financing or anything like that. And oftentimes when they say they have to have it done, usually they're the ones who take longer than we are.
Does Garland have their code done yet?
And that's the updated, the updated language in this agreement essentially clarifies that Garland is working on that and would allow for them to complete that in the meantime.
I can make a motion, if that's okay. I'd make a motion that we table these two items until the April 23rd meeting to give us time to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and then we can bring it back on the April 23rd meeting. My motion.
Okay. I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to table items C and D.
Yes.
Until our April 23rd meeting to get more information. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So we stowed information. What specifically are we looking into? One of the things I was told is that these two were thrown, and it was a letter from, I think I saw from Garland, that there was no objections, whereas this property owner's saying, I didn't even get a chance to object to anything, so I don't know whether I have an objection or not. The property owner I'm talking about did say he's okay with an island annexation, but I think we need to make sure the property owner out there who brought us to the building committee, or the building commission that we started with, needs to have his voice heard. We need to make sure that he's not being railroaded or hurt. He needs to be heard by this, this group somehow, and we need to make sure. Or he's out of town right now in Texas. We need to reach out to him and find out, okay, if we do this, you know, you're good with the island, we're good with Garland, and I think we can probably do take care of it. If it's just an island, it's not going to impact his agriculture business. Okay, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Our last agenda item, except for item number 11, public comment, item A. There's, those wishing to make a public comment shall sign the comment rule and will be responsible for following the rules outlined in the county commission rules and procedures. Speakers will have one three-minute opportunity to speak regardless of the number of items they wish to address. Speakers shall address their comments to the county commission committee. This is a time to be heard. There will not be a back and forth dialogue with the commissioners. Speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the county clerk. The county clerk will make the information available to the county commission. With item Y, we have one, Dan Hardy.
Dan Hardy Brigham. The implementation of broadband fiber optic is very important to the creation of smart cities. Remember, SMART stands for surveillance, monitoring, analysis, reporting technology. We have smart meters on our water, electricity, gas, phones, et cetera. Utah is having broadband installed from border to border. The only state so far in our nation. Box Elder County was one of the several recipients of receiving a large amount of federal funding for broadband. Governor Cox's family owns CentraCom, and they are heavily invested in broadband, receiving large amounts of federal funding. Governor Cox's CentraCom is a topic for another time. The U.S. Constitution Amendment Four states, "The right of the people to be secure in their person, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated." Through broadband and smart devices, the Fourth Amendment is being violated, and we need to await to our office situation. We are all being surveilled, intruding on our privacy. Klaus Schwab of the World Economic Forum is praising Utah as "model state" for implementing the United Nations Agenda 21, now known as Agenda 2030, 2050. It was not implemented in 2021, but that has not deterred their evil agenda. The agenda is still going forward, and our governors, past and present, along with many representatives, are helping with the implementation. We are being destroyed from within. Governor Spencer Cox stated to candidate Jason Preston that Utah did not have smart cities, basically called Mr. Preston a liar. Governor Cox has an hour-long video talking about smart cities and how he wants Utah to be the first smart city-state. Utah is so embedded with the United Nations Agenda 21, also known as the Agenda 2030, 2050, and the World Economic Forum, even on our local level. We have shadow governments like Utah Association of Counties, Utah League of Counties and Cities, Wasatch Regional, Envision Utah, the KMC Gardner Institute, et cetera, who are helping to implement China's social credit score through broadband, smart devices, and smart cities. Do we want our children and future generations living under this tyranny? If you do not comply with the government, just like in China, your bank account can be shut off or denied travel, et cetera. The Box Elder Committee of Liberty petitions this commission to help stop the social credit score that is happening through broadband, smart meter devices, and smart cities. Please help and preserve and protect our living. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Janet, got a warranty in your register? Got a close session, Steve? Anything with personnel actions, volunteer action forms, self-home allowance?
Taking care of that right now.
Taking care of that right now.
Just got a warrant for the one person.
I'll get those letters tomorrow from you.
Okay.
Let's see.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll take copies and, and I'll give them to Chrissy tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, come.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Ready for the motion?
Make a motion, we're going to close session, discuss, is it personnel or legal?
Both.
Okay, other than this letter we got, so both.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to move in the closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.